All right, I got six o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this the order. Will everyone please stand to support me?
I plead allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing is approval of amendment for May 5, 2022. Are there any amendments?
It's just a little typo on the back of page three, item number D, second line. That needs to be bonding.
With those amendments, are there any objections? Hearing none, they are approved. Next is approval of regulations for May 19, 2022, in the amount of $124,607.56. There's an objection, that's approved. Next is approval of county stable, May 12, 2022, in the amount of $344,299.43. There's an objection, that's approved. Next is county stable for May 19, 2022, in the amount of $59,508.33. There's an objection, that's approved. Next is approval manual checks for May 13, 2022, in the amount of $142,531.56. There's an objection, that's approved. Next is manual checks for May 20, 2022, in the amount of $87,063.33. There's an objection, that's approved. Next is approval payroll for May 12, 2022, in the amount of $262,465.93. There's an objection, that's approved. Next is payroll for May 12, 2022, in the amount of $48,982.72. Are there any announcements for changes to the agenda? Hearing none, as we can move on to public comments. They'll start in person. Please remember to keep your comments to three minutes, and if you're online, please raise your hand. Anyone in the room want to make public comment? Mr. David.
David Tab, Dokes County, lifelong resident, taxpayer. On the first part of the manual checks, there is no info or where the money came from or who we went to. It's not that hard to do. Also, in my public written public comment, I'm sure the county commission has a side of relief that I'm not on ballot yet for the general election. I'm working on it. There's a couple of possibilities to do that, and I've had quite sizable amount of people that want to help. Might be a little late, but I think I've perked their interest. And I'm not quite quick doing this ever until I'm gone. So with that said, I had a respectable 45% of the Republican vote. I still represent those 45%, whether y'all like it or not. I do have a voice in eighty-two. It don't have time. Item five, it appears this is the Homeland Security Grant, it's already been approved. Why do you have to do? You know, if this software doesn't work, what are you going, who are you going to take it back to? Where's the money coming from? There's no training, there's no other structures, this software. It says that you needed to do this because you were out of compliance. So when did you find out you were out of compliance? You've already spent millions in software. So why isn't this stuff getting taken care of? Why isn't it being looked at? Item seven, Michelle Gordon's finance. You got 166,000 insurance savings. So now you want to do it and give the employees some type of extra money, one-time deal? The only reason I know that you can get a savings on insurance is if you cut the rates or you increase the, how much person has to pay, co-pay or whatever. Why not put it in a fund, keep it where it is for insurance? And save the employees either in a savings fund or so that they can pay some of their co-pay? Because if you take it out of this account, you're already in trouble with the order that this money is for insurance, not for giving them people some kind of raise or cost of living. So why are you even looking at that way? Why not put it back where the employees can be taken care of and not be tacked on to the patient? There's a whole lot more in here that needs to be taken care of. Don't have a nice day.
Next on the list I have is Ed Hannon.
Ed Hannon from Fallstown, representing myself, and I have over forty years of professional fire service experience. I've come before this commission previously with documentation supporting my concerns. These comments fell on deaf ears, and I expect tonight's comments to do the same. My comments are for the fine citizens of Jefferson County. Thursday night, I attended a JCSA meeting, and my comments were, "The solution to your issue can be found in Senate Bill 224." A few years ago, the county commission was presented with a comprehensive plan for fire EMS service delivery. The plan was developed by a person with a master's degree in public service administration and over twenty-five years of experience in combination system. Yes, a true professional, who was able to comprehend the complex challenges of service delivery here in Jefferson County. The plan had staffed at all seven stations, lowered the county's ISO rating, resulting in lower homeowners insurance for the residents of Jefferson County. So let me explain using an analogy, the current plan that this county commission is pursuing. You're trying to be a master mechanic to fix a car by replacing the battery. That may fix the car temporarily, but the realist do was the alternator. So the short-term fix will leave the vehicle dead on the side of the road. Your short-term fix here is going to result in life lost in the county, human lives, not a normal here. Please hit the pause button. We view this Senate Bill 224 and a comprehensive plan that was presented to the previous county commission and give it a little thought before you continue down the current path. I think you'll find it very light. If you have any questions, you can have a good hold of it for the time.
Justice Enby, raise your hand.
Stacy Tab.
Hello, yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Oh, great, thank you. Hi, this is Stacy Tab, I'm a resident of Shepherdstown. Tonight, I would like to make a comment on the solar energy utilities and a recent decision by the planning commission. For almost three years, the county has attempted to update our own zoning ordinances to accommodate the transition to solar energy. And the planning commission this week decided to forward a revised ordinance to you for a future public hearing. Over the past few years, the state legislature has been updating West Virginia code to include sections for renewable energy. And even our neighbor Virginia has a Clean Economy Act to produce their electricity from 100% renewable sources by 2050. So for the large land use change that is poised to begin in West Virginia and Jefferson County, this upcoming public hearing is going to once again be the commission's chance to ensure that the zoning ordinance is developed with enough conditions to not negatively impact the neighboring residents and functions of the county. At a time previously, you considered making changes to setbacks and buffers. The state has developed limited oversight up until this day. They determined that it was better to leave zoning controls in the county's hands opposed to passing a bill for the facilities to be permitted anywhere. The decommissioning and bonding has been outlined, and that is part of the county tax depending on state agency to ensure development. The Public Service Commission, yes, they'll evaluate projects, but they're primarily concerned with if there'll be any costs to the rate payers. In some other areas, an 800-acre utility will have little impact. It might be abandoned mine land, it's already cleared, there's no current purpose. Here, 800 acres might have a forested area, an old farmhouse, a cemetery, neighbors over the fence line. There could be various wildlife passing through. So this is part of the reason the community was persistent for a conditional use designation, so that each project's compatibility with the surrounding land can be determined, and any reasonable conditions may be implemented. I ask that, you know, in the coming weeks, before you decide on an amendment to the zoning requirements, that you would carefully reconsider the public's research and opinions, and not just the requests of the future developers to incorporate a responsible guide for these installations to be designed for Jefferson County specifically. Thank you.
Last call for anyone in the room?
Yes, sir.
Just please state your name for the record.
Justin Morgan. Matt Taylor.
Yeah, we're sitting.
My name is Justin Morgan, I'm a lifelong resident of Jefferson County. I have a business here, I've built a house here, I'm raising my family here. It comes to my attention that the county commission is trying to purchase and own EMS system discounting. A system that has been put on by the volunteer organizations for generations proudly, safely, and efficiently. Now, I look at this system, I like to look at it from all positions. I'm a firm believer that there are multiple sides to every story. I've looked at the fit report put on by the county commission, I've listened to the argument by the volunteer organizations. When I put myself in the position of the county commissioners, I feel to see how this benefits us, the citizens. Quite frankly, I think it makes our lives less safe, it will cost us more money in the long run. Sad part is that you do not need our approval to move forward with this. If you chose to stoop to such a low level without our approval and move forward with it, you could. So I direct my attention to any of the citizens out there listening to me right now. I ask you to stand with me and stand against this idea. Contact your commissioners over and over again repeatedly, and let them know that you do not agree with them buying your safety. Let them know you are not okay with this idea. Clearly, you do not care about the safety of our citizens, nor the facts that have been brought to you. That is clear because you continue to move forward with this plan. I end this by talking to you directly. I live three miles away from the middleway volunteer fire department. And though they do not have paid staffing no longer, they do operate an ambulance out of that building. With your plan, that ambulance will be gone. My next available ambulance to my address will be about three times far away. That makes this personal to me. You're making my family and my neighbors' families less safe. So if you choose to go forward with this, and after you put this through and ignore all effects and all comments and all concerns of us citizens, I want to put you in your seat. Make sure you go home, you look your loved ones in your eyes, and you tell them that you're responsible for the deaths that will occur due to the delay, the lack of available resources under your EMS system. You are taking this to bed with your commissioners. Let me know how you see. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wants to make public comment?
I was standing over here, and I hate to talk to people. Ross Morgan, fire chief, Jefferson County Fire Department. I'm here again to remind the commissioners of how bad and stupid idea this is going to be. You've heard me over and over again, but it is a very stupid idea. But more importantly, it's a dangerous idea to even think about going this. You're definitely reducing the quality of service and reduction of services. You are creating a longer time waiting for individuals there for the ambulances. There are many scenarios I could present you that where people will be waiting twenty, thirty minutes, forty minutes, so because the ambulance is being tied up. And contrary to whatever official reports says, there are numerous, numerous times where there's at least five, six, seven units on the road were committed at one time. They're either responding, they're either at the scene, or they're kind of at the hospital. I don't know if you mean they took to hospital, but nowadays, your ambulance crews a lot of times are waiting anywhere from half hour to hour just to get the gurney into the ER. So again, it truly amazes me also how five of you all can sit here and think that you're going to continue to pay the salaries that you do down at the ESA staff employees, but you also want to inherit the full payment of all the rolling stock, equipment, the band-aids, the whole nine yards, 100% that we currently pay for, and not raise the amnesty. And you think people make enough money off of revenue to continue to do that service, and also maybe increase it because I never want the commissioner to say that when they get like four more to say they're firing, which is again the most stupidest idea ever of a fish god in Berkey County. It does not work. So please, go with option C of the plan that the volunteers put together. That's the most, that's the plan that serves the community. Not so much efficiency, because you don't pay efficiency with people's lives. You truly don't. But it's the most best plan to use for the health of the people, the citizens of my son's family, five family, girl's family, everyone. It is an absolute liberator, and I really continue to that, Mr. Oliver. It just, it just plain stupid. I cannot understand it anymore than that. Continue the way we have served today. We are willing to give, you are not willing to give at all. We are willing to give with the option C to share revenue. So please, get your head out of your hands, go with option C that volunteers put together.
All right, is there anyone else in the room that would like me to comment? All right, I'll close public comment, we've moved to agenda number one.
Hello.
Even.
Okay. I've had a vacant spot that I haven't filled. And I have decided to fill it with one of my part-time employees. And she has worked with me in my office since 2012. It is Robin Gainer. I would like to take her from part-time to full-time. Because of the experience and past county experience, I want to start her off at $43,680. My part-time, my full-time position that I have available is $37,750. But I will move money from my part-time line item to fill in whatever amount needs to be made up. And so anyway, I would like for your approval, and she will not start full-time until July 1st.
So this is all budget neutral then?
Yeah.
I'll move to approve the transfer of Robin Gainer from part-time to full-time with a salary of $43,680, starting July 1st, 2022.
Second.
So moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next I have is county clerk, but we represent.
Unfortunately, Jackie couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here on her behalf. We had an employee leave in April that left us with a vacancy in our recording, or what we call our front office. Jackie would like to fill that position. With Kaylin Hoffman, she worked for us during early voting and participated in the campus. She was one of the ones that did the hang count. Her starting salary would be $29,000, and it is budget neutral. And her start date would be May 23rd.
I'll move to approve the employment of Kaylin Hoffman in the county clerk's office. Salary at $29,000, start date May 23.
Second. So moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And you need us to certify the election?
Yes, so I gave you a copy, you have two copies of the certification. Before you accept those, though, you would have to convene as the board of campusers to accept the campus results.
For us to do it now, while you're here?
You can do it now.
When she's here.
Yeah.
I move that we can convene as a board of campusers.
Second. So moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. So can we accept all of them? Have all of them been certified?
So we can accept everything except the second congressional district. That last county certified today at 1:30, so the 48-hour clock did not start until today at 1:30. So you can either have a special session to certify the last one, or you can wait. I don't know that the state would like for you to wait until your next meeting. But they, you would have to certify 48 hours from today, the weekend doesn't count. So it would be Monday after 1:30. But every other office is on that certification, that's the only office that is missing.
Well, I move that we approve and endorse the certification of 2022 primary election results with the exception of the second congressional district race.
Second. So moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do you need both of these signed, or just one?
I do.
Okay. There's only two spots.
Yes, because Commissioner Hatt did not take part in the campus.
I'm going to be coming to regular session. Second. So moving second, is there any more discussions? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move back to our session. So you have, of course, Nikki?
That is.
All right, thank you. Next I have is John number three, the sheriff.
We have a few items on your agenda tonight, mostly dealing with the sheriff's office taking over the ambulance fee collection as it was recommended in the audit by the state orders office. One of the things I'd like first was one of my administrative staff from my office has requested to be transferred over to the tax office to help take over the ambulance fees. Requesting that this is a grade two, 80-hour position due to her experience. I'm requesting salary, starting salary at $35,000. State audit's report highlighted the need for segregation duties for the ambulance fees collection. Therefore, I'm requesting a second position also to assist in achieving this. As everyone knows by the audit, that the ambulance fees pretty much are a mess, and it's going to need to take some time to get things squared away. Tax office has received a quote to transfer the ambulance fee collection to software systems. I believe Madam Sessler is in agreement with this, and also your county administrator. The idea of having two separate, two separate programs in one office is kind of ludicrous. All this would have to come out of the ambulance fees. The estimate for the software is 20, approximately $27,534. Like I said, I'm seeking to hire a second person for the ambulance fee, for the ambulance office now that it's set up, and so that we can start it into full operation. Software systems will not only handle, be able to handle and be, to also be able to talk to each other, the tax office and the ambulance fees, but they'll also do the billing. So we send them everything, because, correct, nobody knows who did the billing last time, and we need to make sure that everything is done correctly. Okay. I'm, like I said, I'm asking for the $35,000 for my employee that transferred to this, to the tax office because, and only reason why I'm coming to you is because in essence, it's just a transfer within my office, but because of pay raise, I'm asking for your approval for the $35,000. I move creation the second ambulance fee position, and it's software systems come in and give us this program for the collection of the ambulance fees themselves. Then, of course, since I am losing an administrative assistant from my office to go to the ambulance fees, I'm going to need to hire a replacement for her. So I have advertised it out for the second, for that position also.
Do you know what grade our ambulance fee collection assistant, what grade they were in?
Two.
Two, and what grade is it?
Was it three? Well, I think it's a two.
It's a two.
Two.
They were, well, at least in the budget, making $31,560 is our budget.
I guess my question is, is $35,000, is that budget, is the budget neutral? Is it budget neutral? Is it in the same grade? I don't know, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
It's not budget neutral because I believe this person would make more, but I can't. It would be, well, based on the budget documents, it would be about, almost $3,500. It's $3,400 difference salaries. Yeah. Plus benefit. Yeah.
Plus, okay. So the current, the current assistant made, what'd you say, 31,4? 31,4?
That was the billing.
Billing, okay. Okay. What I would like to know, I would just like to know if, you know, before you approve the extra money, if you make sure it's just budget neutral, okay?
Well, it's, it's, go ahead. It's not coming out of your budget, it's coming out of the ambulance fees money, first of all, okay? And it being budget, this is not somebody that's walking in off the street. This is somebody that's been doing this now, and working at my office, and has hit the ground running, and has found numerous, I should say, I'd say problems, but maybe. She said there were boxes of files disorganized, billing years are mixed together. She's going through all this stuff right now. Statement of bills are intertwined, intertwined or commingled. She's found in 2017 and 2019 bills together, that kind of stuff. And she's very efficient at what she's doing, and that's why I approved her and moved you over there because I knew she would handle it. I need somebody to hit the ground running, and I think she deserves the $35,000.
So what is she making now? I guess that's what you're trying to determine. What kind of bump with that?
I don't have her current rate now. I believe somewhere around the $31,000, $32,000.
I understand you need staff, but I think we need to have a clearer budget picture because I'm not, I'm not as comfortable with moving ambulance fee to software systems. I think you're still on the AS400 system, and I prefer us all to get on one system.
Well, we're not going to be, we're not going to move the Tyler or into my tax office. It's staying there, and they just got a new upgrade on that, on software systems. And I believe going the other way around is putting the software systems into the, into the ambulance fee collection will allow better migration of the monies in, from one office to the other. From, because my office is control this now, the deposits made and things like that. So I don't believe having two separate, two separate. So I don't believe having two separate, two separate programs running in one office is efficient.
Okay, but you're gonna have staff dedicated to ambulance fee, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Not your general tax.
Right.
I need to see the bigger plan, that's what.
Well, I, I guess I would like to understand what training on the Tyler system for the ambulance billings, is that where we're running it out of? Are we been running it out of?
They've been running out of Tyler now, and she, and, and again, um, yes, they've been running out of Tyler, and she's trying to learn that. Besides dealing with all of the things that she's finding.
Right.
And I'm quite sure if Software Systems takes it over, they're gonna come in and teach her everything that needs to be done on that system also.
Right, I'm, I'm just, I'd like to understand, of training this person up on the Tyler for, versus integrating everything back into another system. I, I would like to understand the cost associated with that, and get this person.
Okay.
Ambulance collection trained on Tyler.
Yeah.
Which might, you know, I think, a consideration instead of integrating it back into another system.
Do we know how much it costs to, to implement that Tyler in for just the?
So, so just, just a point of clarification, so I, I'm not a supporter of.
Okay.
Taking to the AS400, I'm a supporter of keeping it in Tyler, sorry, we, you misinterpreted.
Okay.
And, and my, so, we paid about $18,000 in 2018 to 2019 to get the ambulance module into Tyler. I think that the AS400 module, $25,000, $26,000, I'm not sure exactly how much it is. That's what it would be to take it back into the, or take it into the AS400, not back into the AS400, because it was never there to begin with. So, we already have, we already own the module, we're already doing it in that module. I, one, one thing I will agree with Sheriff one is that we have many silos, many, many silos. And ideally, a best practice would be to start dumping things into one silo of one software piece. At some point in time, we're gonna have to make a critical decision, uh, whether we're gonna maintain and keep the AS400. Or we're going to take the AS400 offline and migrate everything into Tyler, the entire ERP package. So that's gonna be a decision, probably not for today, but every little step that we make is gonna hinge on what we do down the road.
And I, I guess it's for my, I just like, since it's in Tyler now, and that's what we're using, I'd like to understand the cost to get this person trained adequately from Tyler systems or whatever compared to converting to, back to another system. With that, so we'll be going back to headcount.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I, I'm the same way, if you plan on having a, a, one person there to take care of this, all we have to do is train them on that system. The AS400 is a very old antiquated system, I don't see why we need to go back in time. And, and we do meet, the eighties won't meet back, and I'm saying this, okay? All right. But I, I don't know, it's already in there, so I feel we should probably keep it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure if I can just answer that one more thing, I'm not sure with the fund balance we have currently in the ambulance fund that it could absorb an extra position plus a, a, the cost of a module. I, I just don't think we've got, there's, there's just not money in there currently right now.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, please?
So I think currently right now with the balance in the, in the ambulance fund, I don't believe there's money in there for another position.
Both, and the module?
And the mo, well, yeah, I mean, the position you have right now, Emma, I guess, is who's moving over. She currently makes $32,000, I just confirmed that. And so, um, taking her up to $35,000, we could certainly absorb that out of the ambulance fee, that's not an issue.
The problem is, it, it, there's only one person in the ambulance fees collecting the money, if she goes on vacation, there's nobody there. Okay? And you're with as much work as it is to try to put everything together from what the, the problem she's finding. And also make it efficient, and also make it by code, because that's what the, even the auditors said recommended to men, to people in that position. That, with that, I'm gonna need two people, and even, we've talked about that a year ago, Mr. Commissioner, about it. And it's can't be one person position, because it's, then, then we're setting her up to fail.
But couldn't we cross-train all the clerks there to, to, and have two screens, I'm just gonna say one AS400, one Tyler? And then all the clerks can collect, so if she does go on vacation?
It's gonna be two separate windows, tax office and that way, so that, and when any people come in, it can't, money can't be commingled. So, and that's one of the problems we're gonna have, I'm quite sure, is that people are gonna show one check with their taxes and their ambulance fees on it, and they're gonna, gonna not be able to accept it. But it's gonna be a tax office, tax office window, and they go walk over to the right and go take their ambulance fees. So the idea that I, I only have one person there, I think is rather ludicrous. And again, I think they're setting her up, we're setting her up to fail, we're setting the system up to fail. And we've had too many problems, you saw, you saw page upon page of the auditor's opinions. And again, going, just going back to the auditor's opinion, it should be a two-person office.
Yeah, well, I wanna play this scenario out for you real quick, if you're gonna have two windows, and you'll, you'll have to say wait 20 minutes to pay your taxes. And then they say, hey, I have this $35, $39 check, I wanna pay my tax, my ambulance fee. And they're gonna say, well, you gotta wait in that line, it's five D. You're gonna have a lot of angry people there wanting to pay this, it'd be, it'd be so much more streamlined to train, have all the clerks trained to.
But that means they gotta have two systems on one computer, so they bring up one, and play it on, and AS400, and then they gotta stop and try to, and try to bring up another. I think that's inefficient also.
Well, I can do, I don't have my computer right here in front of me, I, I'm looking at my agenda, if I wanted to, I can just click a button, I can look at my emails and stuff.
I understand that.
So.
I think, I think, I did check with I T O M, and there is a way to toggle back and forth between the AS400 and the, and Tyler system. Should you be in a situation where you've gotta take two payments at one moment? That, that's as much as I can say, I'm not steeped in that process, I don't know what that would take time-wise, or you know, how much?
I have no idea what time it's gonna take, go, and going from your, your one to another, it probably has to be logged in each time, things like that, if you're logging out of one to go into another, I don't know. None of us know.
Well, I do, the AS400, you can make your AS400 screen open at the same time that you access Tyler, Tyler is accessed through the internet. I do it all the time because I still access the old systems and look at history, and I have the AS400 open as well as Tyler. It's just a matter of clicking.
Too much, okay. So it doesn't have, it doesn't have a sleeper on it, if it's inactive for five, 10 minutes, you gotta walk back in, okay?
Not on.
Okay, thank you.
You have double screens.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead, um, based off of what John just mentioned, in the one position for ambulance fee collection being approved at the $35,000, you're requesting for this person to transfer internally. We are saving recruiting cost and advertising and interviewing and all of that. So if we can sustain the additional $3,000 in that salary, I make a motion to approve that.
I'll, I'll second that.
We need the, we need.
Do you need to name, we need to name the transfer?
Emma Brown.
And her, we need to start it when she's coming down.
She's there already.
Immediately.
Immediately, she's, she went over, she went over last Thursday.
Okay, you wanna amend your motion?
Um, then my motion to transfer Emma Brown affected immediately after $35,000.
I'll second that.
All right, so moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I think it's four to one, motion carries.
I'm moving the motion to go ahead, you gotta replace her, right, in this business practice, I'm gonna move the motion to, uh, to hire or to advertise administrative assistant.
At $32,000?
At 32, at the rate of.
Whatever, yeah.
Yep. Never the.
Yeah, great, too.
Great, too, I agree to.
Sorry, I'll second.
So moving second, is there any more discussion?
And that, this is just to advertise, not to hire?
Yes, 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 you go ahead.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay, that's four to one. There any motions from the commission? It's sure. Next up is number four, Bob Burner.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm happy to be here on a happy topic tonight. I believe you have a copy, here to request an EMS Week proclamation. It is National EMS Week, May 15th through 21st, we're, still have a few days of it left, we've been trying to celebrate and acknowledge the EMS folks all week long, so we're happy to have you here. Would you like me to read the proclamation, or, I don't know how this works?
Please.
Yes, ma'am. To designate the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergent medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians. Train members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the Jefferson County Commission in recognition of this event, hereby proclaims the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the EMS strong theme, EMS Week Rising to the Challenge, and honor and support of the men and women who rise to the challenge every day to care for the residents and visitors of Jefferson County, West Virginia.
I'll, I'll move to accept the proclamation of EMS Week as presented by Director Burner for, for May 15th to 21st, 2022.
So moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a, I'll get a sign.
I don't have a hard copy.
If I may, get your autograph. I brought along some of my folks here, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's eight and a half back there. There's something in the water.
He's talking, he's talking, John. All right, uh, next item I have is number five, Andrew Rosen.
Evening, commissioners. So I'm ready for an effort at night tea tonight. Um, but I'm here to request approval for Homeland Security Grant Program Award $94.85 for the purchase of SolarWinds Network Configuration Manager. Basically, this is gonna use network analysis to help us detect and address cybersecurity issues, and not least, on the county's data networks, so both downtown and at 911. As you guys know, cybersecurity is a major issue, it's always coming out with something new, I got a alert on my phone today about VSphere, which is what we use for a lot of our remote access, is having vulnerabilities that we gotta patch as well. So again, it's a major issue, and requesting for approval of that grant, so we can purchase SolarWinds this evening.
Just to be clear, this is a grant through Homeland Security, and there's no required match.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Then I like this. So I make the motion to approve the Homeland Security Grant Program Award of $9,845 for the purchase of SolarWinds Network Configuration Manager software. And for the Commissioner, Commissioner President to find all the necessary.
Second.
So moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You have a hard time.
Not in front of you. Am I the authorized official? There's other titles.
Sounds like I could get that on me.
Yeah. Place you have to sign on almost every page on the computer.
I think this one's far. There you are. So we can move to item number six, Roger Goodwin.
I have three items. The first one is approval to advertise to fill the building inspector position. The Department of Adventure and Planning and Zoning's fiscal year 23 budget has funding for an additional building inspector position. Effective July 1, 2022, the Director of Adventure and Planning and Zoning is requesting approval to go ahead and advertise to fill the inspector position so that we can have a person in the position. Soon after the funding is available on July 1st, the position's funded at up to $45,000 per year. We, the Office of Building, Prince and Inspections has one plan reviewer, one commercial building inspector, and one residential building inspector. The increased workload over the past two years creates a need for an additional building inspector. And under West Virginia State Code, building inspectors have to pass testing requirements and become certified, and this process usually takes up two years. Proposed action is a fiscal year 2023 budget neutral action, no additional funding is needed, I have a proposed motion.
I'm sure you can give us another bill of inspector. Demand is high right now.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the, and to, to approve and to advertise to fill the building inspector position.
And I amend that for a salary not to, not to exceed $45,000.
Absolutely, not to exceed $45,000, yes, ma'am.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
The movement seconded, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, the next one is approval to advertise to fill the county planner position. Department of Adventure and Planning and Zoning's fiscal year 2023 budget has funding for a county planner position effective July 1, 2022. We're requesting approval to go ahead and advertise to fill the county planner position, so we can have a person in the position soon after funding's available July 1st. The position is funded at a salary up to $60,000 a year. The planning office has had as many as three planners over recent years, the number has been reduced to one through attrition. The physician will be responsible for overseeing the comprehensive plan update that's gonna be coming up here in the next year. And processing subdivision plans and learning that aspect of the job. It's a budget neutral action in the fiscal year 2023 budget, no additional funding is needed, and I have a proposed motion. I move to approve and advertise to fill the county planner position, salary not funded up to $60,000.
Second.
So moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Third one is a request of approval to implement the Deputy Director Position. to implement the deputy director position. The Department of Engineering Planning and Zonings Fiscal Year 2023 budget has funding for a deputy director position effective July 1, 2022. We're requesting approval to go ahead and make the promotion in title and begin training the employee for the position. Designing administrator will be promoted to deputy director. However, the deputy director will continue to function as a zoning administrator as part of the deputy director's job duties. The deputy director will also take on additional job duties in the new position. I had a job description attached. And the budgeted salary is $71,000 a year and would become effective on July 1, 2022. The proposed action is a fiscal year 2023 budget neutral action. No additional funding is needed, and I have a proposed motion.
If I can add one thing to that. We are taking a look at that work program, and we probably will tweak that job description a little bit. Very soon, but I'd like to go ahead with the action tonight so we can get that deployed started.
And we approved the request, made a motion to approve the request to implement the deputy director position at $71,000 per year.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any more discussion?
Oh, yeah.
I'll add to that. I would add another. And that would start, that position will start July 1st.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Congratulations.
I have two items on me as well. The first is, are you in approval of the WB Core Insurance Renewal for fiscal year 23? I included a complete copy of the contract as well. For fiscal year 23, we did include a 2.4% increase, which was about $7,871 for liability insurance, and that was based on historical trends. A 5% increase, $5,923 was included for workers' comp insurance, and that was also based on historical trends. The renewal rate for our liability insurance is $327,672, which is about 0.6% less than what our projected budget was for fiscal year 23. The renewal will result in savings of $1,963 for that particular line. The fiscal year 23 budgeted annual payroll of $11.6 million increased by $552,000 over fiscal year 22's estimated payroll. The fiscal year 23 budget included a 5% increase or $5,926 for workers' comp insurance, and that was based on historical trends. County's workers' comp experience rating did increase from 0.80 in fiscal year 22 and had been that rate for a number of years to 0.95 in fiscal year 23. So that also increased our rate. Because total payroll increased and the county's experience rating increased, a 7.9% increase was received for the county's workers' comp premium renewal. The renewal rate for workers' comp is $127,865 and is $3,490, more than the estimated budget of $124,375. Total fiscal year 23 WB Core Self-Insurance Renewal Proposal is $455,537. The fiscal year 23 budget includes $454,010, and the county will need to transfer $1,527 to cover that increase. I would recommend that we transfer it out of our health insurance premium program, which is line 001423, because we had $166,000 in health insurance premium savings. I also included breakdowns of all of that information in the package. And I just want to remind the commission that we do have cyber risk liability. That was a policy that we increased last year. Our coverage includes $250,000 current, or aggregate, per member and $1 million maximum aggregate for all cyber risk losses. We opted for additional amount above that for an additional $2 million, and that was approved last year. Do I have any questions about the risk insurance policies?
I'll make the motion to accept the fiscal year 23 risk and workers' compensation and renewal from West Virginia for risk.
Second. It's been moved to second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Needing a motion for the transfer.
I'll bring that to you.
Okay. Motion carries?
And the second item on the agenda is a joint item for John and I. So I'll.
So at the last meeting, Sheriff Anton brought to our attention an issue about pay. According to State Code 7-7-7, the elected officials are allowed to budget their merit and colas at any time of the year that they would like to do that. So when we prepared the budget this year, we prepared, we prepared the budget to reflect a 1% colo effective July 1 and a merit of up to 5% merit of up to 5% during their anniversary date. Those numbers were assembled in the budget and put forth and voted on by the commission approved. For clarification, what that means is if we have an employee who is coming into their anniversary date in the middle of the year, that budget would reflect only six months of 5% up to 5% merit. So when you look at the budget as a whole, it does not reflect a full 6% that would be infused from July 1 to June 30. What the, I believe Tom and some of the other elected officials requesting is we bring to you several different scenarios which we prepare tonight. Michelle will be prepared to talk about those so you can have a candid discussion about what that would look like from a financial standpoint, what type of impact that would look like. So with that, Michelle, I'll let you roll through some of these different scenarios. And we're prepared tonight to talk about any other scenarios that you want to introduce as well. We can do that probably.
All right. So option A, total cost for six combined cola merit on July 1st is $677,000. The total additional budget needed would be $240,000. The total additional budget for just the elected official departments would be $134,274. And for commission departments would be $106,014.
So let me just, for clarification, if you were, this scenario was if every one of the employees, both from the commission side as well as the elected officials, see the 6% cola merit combination July 1st. It would have a budget impact of $240,000. $240,000.
The second option, option B, would be to provide a total, let's see, a 3% combined cola merit on July 1st and then an additional 3% on January 1st. The total cost for that would be $515,569. So the additional budget needed would be $78,115. The additional budget for elected separately would be $39,704. And then for the commission departments would be $38,411. There are, you know, a few issues with kind of blurring the lines between what's cola and what's merit, because right now our policy calls for merit to be performance-based. And if you are combining them, it kind of blurs that line a little bit. And it almost makes it more like just a cola instead of cola and a merit. So I just want to caution you there. Option C calls for a total, no change to the merit increase based on employee hire date, would be just increasing the 1% cola on July 1st to 2%. That has a cost of $235,081, so additional budget needed. I didn't separate this for, you know, between the commission and elected officials with the total costs. Or the additional budget would be $105,454. Option D, total cost for a 2.5% cola on July 1st. We would need an additional budget of $157,949, and there would be no change to the merit that is already approved on employee hire dates or anniversary dates and based on performance. Then option E would be a one-time payment of $700 for employees on July 1st as a cola payment, but it would be a one-time payment. So it would have no budgetary impact in future years. They would get that one-time payment on July 1st to help offset the cost of inflation that they've been receiving. They would still have their 1% cola that's already approved. They would still have 5% on their anniversary date that's already been approved. And the total additional cost for providing full-time employees with a cola payment of $700 would be about $155,000. We do have savings of about $160,000, $64,000 at this point in our health insurance fund. So if you were to approve any of those options, we have that amount available, and anything over and above that would need to come from fund balance.
How much do we have in the $160,000?
$164,000.
So I have a question. In lieu of a stipend or pulling with the colon everything, can we do a premium holiday? Are we permitted to do that? Where we pay one or two of the premium payments?
Well, we typically only do that when we get a premium credit from the insurance company. This wasn't a premium credit. This was just a reduction in our total premium. This isn't a premium credit.
I guess what she's asking, can we do, can we do one or two premium holidays? Would we have the funds to do that?
As an option.
It would be paid for with that $166,000.
Yeah, I mean, in lieu of a one-time cola or... So I agree. I don't like the law. I don't like blurring the lines between a cola and a merit. Not every person working in the county necessarily will get up. With it being based on performance, I prefer to keep it that way and allow the people managing that are managing and directing these folks and the electeds to determine who's getting what with that merit and reward. Good performance as opposed to everybody gets, you know, a set amount. I would prefer to look at cola or somehow how we could do a premium, a premium holiday where we pay the insurance one or two payrolls. I know this impacts people on the lower end of the spectrum with salary much more than.
Right, right. And the CPI index, when I checked it during budget, it was 6.7%. I think it's even higher than that at this point. Right now, the employees are hurting. They didn't get an increase last year at all. So I think any consideration you can give to potentially changing the cola amount should be done.
And that's what I'm interested in pursuing because I felt during the budget that, you know, our 1% cola was insignificant compared to the rising costs that we had. And that was before we knew our insurance renewal rate. Yeah, it takes about $100 to put on my car for the tank gas. So I'm leaning more toward the 2.5% cola or whatever we can make it to use the available funding. You know, and then that will too, for employees to understand, that will be, and us to understand, that will be built into our wage scale, you know, for the futures.
Well, that would be another question. We've already adjusted the wage scale by 1%. We don't necessarily have to increase it by 2.5%. So if we choose to adjust the cola, we would also need to decide tonight if we want to adjust the wage scale by that 2.5%.
Would it be easier to go with option E? Just to do the $700 month sum?
Well, that was the commissioner at here. I had a question for Commissioner Jackson. So what would the difference be of if you did the premium holiday, like you were saying, versus the one-time payment? Is it that you're paying the insurance versus paying the employee? Or what is the difference there?
Yeah, you would be paying the employees portion of, covering the portion of the insurance.
But that's different for every employee because some employees only pay $20 because they have single coverage.
Well, and medical benefits are pre-tax deducted too, so.
And some employees, some employees don't even use the insurance.
Correct. Some don't even have insurance.
Yeah, so I don't think, I don't think that would be equal across the board. Personally, I would lean more towards E. And that's $700 month sum, January 1st. And then we could pull that out.
July 1st.
I mean, sorry. Correct my glasses. July 1st, and that would cover it out of our fund, the insurance fund.
Yes.
I don't want to ask these to share.
Yes, sir. All right. If the county had given the employees a raise last year, I would say this is fine, but they didn't. All right. I don't know if any of the elected officials, I've got four of them here, and they're not going to give all their employees 5% because they got no raise last year. Now, cost of living went up 8.5%. 8.5%. And you're talking about giving them a 1% raise, you approved 1% raise, or even if I'm going to give them a 5% raise. And this $166,000 savings you have is because you're paying less and the employees are paying more. You're going from 81% to 79%, and the employees are picking up the 2,000. So that's not $166,000 savings. That's $166,000 I save to the county, but not to the employees. You're doing this on the backs of the people that worked for me, the prosecutor, the other elected officials, and your employees. It's wrong.
So where was this during budget session?
Sorry, sir.
Where was this during budget session?
I didn't know. We didn't know what you were giving them, you know?
So you can't ask for it.
I'm sorry, sir.
You can't ask for it?
Again, when we got the, we got the information on the raise, that's when, let me found it out.
So you couldn't have asked for more?
I'm sorry.
So you couldn't have asked for more?
I guess I could have, but at the time, it was pretty much, this is what you're getting. And I didn't know until I found out about it. Because again, when I worked for the county or I worked for the sheriff, everybody got their raise on July 1st.
Well, it's not how it's done now.
I understand that. It's not fair that if somebody gets, somebody gets, was hired on July 15th, and they get their full 5% raise, and they, and the person who joined, well, it may have been hired before them in June, at the same year, but because they are hired in June 15th, they're going to get $80 or whatever it is on that year's raise. Not fair.
So we're back to our first question. Where was this during budget session?
Again, I apologize for being in that, but I didn't know that was going on.
So you shouldn't be like, I can't expect you to plan ahead for your own budget?
I can, but if I, if I take your money that you're giving me for my budget under what Mr. Nissel says, I'm giving everybody a less percentage. That's not fair to them either. And again, that's not fair, not fair to them when it comes down to retirement. I spoke my piece.
So, I'm sorry, the 2.5 is, it's 1.5 on top of the one we already approved? Or is that additional?
In place of the 1%.
Okay, all right, that's what I remember. And I know we have the savings this year, but inflation's hitting everybody, and we've got to sustain these colas well beyond. And so we do have to look at years ahead and revenue and being able to sustain. And the last thing I want to see is we can't pay hold and have to lay people off or terminate positions because we don't, we can't sustain. So I think we've got to look at what's in front of us right now with what we have in savings and what we can do.
Well, I make the motion that we implement option B, which is a 2.5% cola on 7-1. And there'd be no change in the merit that would be based on an employee anniversary date.
And there's change to the current grade scale?
I don't know about that yet.
I can bring that back to you.
Yeah.
Figures, the rate scale, the pay rate scale.
I'll bring that back to you.
Yeah, we can look in our final budget.
Should we look at that before we move any of these motions tonight, you think?
I think we can look at it at a later date.
I'm actually going to second Jane's motion for the additional budget. We need to go $157,949 for option B.
It's been moved to second. Is there any more discussion?
I'll just, I'd just like to add a little bit. I know the, I know the employees are hurting. Certainly something we don't have control over, since like... Certainly something we don't have control over is inflation. And it's the worst inflation we've ever seen in this country. And hopefully it will soon, you know, subside. You know, with the cost of building materials and the plastic materials that they have gone through the roof. And I just wanted to state that I understand employees, I'm going to understand where they're at. Because it is, this is some hard times that we're going through. And if I could, if I had any control of it, which I don't, we wouldn't be having an 8% inflation rate right now. But that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to go to the whole business?
Oh, okay. Before we do the names of our...
So next up is Jen, I have number nine, discussion on in causal action concerning tobacco-free parks policy. If you're not ready, we...
No, I'm, I'll talk to you.
I know what we did.
Right, so two weeks ago, the Parks and Recreation Parks Board brought to you a proposal to create a tax tobacco-free policy for all parks and recreation. And just understand, some of those parks lie o-categorize, some of them lie earlier. So we, you gave us the opportunity to work with our legal to address this stuff, to make sure it's all buttoned up. So this made the decision, and we brought to the board, the Parks Recreation Board last night. They had one change, they wanted to make to the policy. And it was just, it was taking some burs to take out the word...
Possession.
Possession.
We felt like we couldn't tell someone they couldn't have cigarettes in their pocket. They just can't smoke.
So you've got the amended policy in front of you. My recommendation, after talking to the board last night, I think it's a good policy. I would recommend it, you know, to adopt it. Any questions? We certainly haven't answered any questions or...
Anything that I can tell you from the park side?
I would just like to thank Mr. Britt for working on this.
Yeah, I do just have a question, it's more on the violations and penalties. So this isn't just for parks and recreation facilities, this is all parks and recreation property?
Correct, park, park land.
Park.
And, well, I mean, buildings, they already can't smoke inside. But this is for all.
Okay, so I'm just curious about like the violations and penalties, how you plan to...
Yeah, we talked about that too. You know, I mean, thank goodness. Honestly, we realize that it's something that we, you know, are not going to be able to enforce. And we certainly don't have staff, or the sheriff's office doesn't have staff to go out and watch to see if someone's smoking in the park. But if we see people doing that, we can notify them that it's a park-free zone. We will be doing a promotional campaign to let people know that this is a change that's coming. Signage will be posted, social media. And it's going to have to develop into its own, I think. You know, again, what we talked about last night, cases of maybe enforcement, is if it becomes a confrontational issue, then we would look at legal resources. But it's the first step toward making the parks smoke-free.
And I know I advocate for smoking because I can't stand it. But I'm just, was worried about additional county resources maybe being needed where we already are kind of stretched.
Not anything, it would be other than any other confrontational issue or confrontational issue we would come up with at park event.
We're hoping, sorry, I apologize, I was at the Kulanis meeting, we were in the presentation. So we're hoping that it will self-police itself, you know, and I think that, and I think that already, that already happens to a point. You know, a lot of, we've had, you know, the big, the big issue we had in the past was the COVID year. Because people want to come out and, you know, with their families and be there and enjoy it if you have people smoking around them. You know, but I think for the most part, people would step further away, or some people would put them out. But I think having this policy now kind of helps us push that issue a little bit more. And we can let people know before they come in, you know? You can't, you can't smoke in here. And I think, I think people, for the most part, will respect that. We have usually the sheriff's reserves or the sheriff's deputies at any of the large concerts and events that we have. So I think if we do have a confrontation with someone, we are able to, you know, request assistance from the Internet Edwards or whatever sheriff.
Pretty quick. And, you know, I'll age myself here back before the schools stopped tobacco use. You know, you could go at the ball field at the Little, behind Jefferson, and there were people smoking all the time. And they made this move and posted signage, and it took a little while, but you don't have it now. It's going to be a gradual thing, but again, we're taking the first step in having a policy in place that backs up our position. Rather than telling someone, you can't smoke in the park, well, why can't I? Well, now we at least have an official policy that's been voted on and approved and publicized.
All right, I'll leave you.
And this is Commissioner, oh, I was just going to say, one thing, I was listening into the meeting last night, and I just wanted to say, I do think the policy is a good idea. I know across the board, everyone had said they were interested in having signs. And I think that if you're going to make the move to have signs, there does need to be a policy to go with it. And it kind of gives it, gives the signs like that teeth and lets people know this is the direction that they're moving.
I'll give it a move to accept it, the tobacco policy for the parks and recreation.
I'll second that, it's actually legal policy, 002. Tobacco-free policy.
Yes.
Leave a lot, but this is our new, we're working on a new book.
Yeah.
We're two in the book.
Already been moved and seconded, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Thank you, thanks very much.
So we arrange for no rain on July 4th.
No, we are not. We're going to turn out of our three concert series.
So there is no rain on Thursday night?
Yes, next Thursday. This, next Thursday, everyone should be at Samuel Michael's Park.
That's our first concert.
First concert, thank you.
All right, next thing I have is Jen, I have number 10, is there any updates? Do you want to start?
Sure, sure, I can start off. So the last time we met, you had directed me to reach out to the various fire companies to request two things, that we would be able to appraise their ambulances. Just to record Burner gave me a list of the ambulances in a list of order that he would like to have appraised. I sent those notices out to this fire chief. The other one I sent out to the fire chief was a question about the square footage. Need one of their respective firehouses so we could start to assemble some Fair Market lease rates for that. I'm happy to say that we've got very, very good response, but it's not all in yet. But as soon as we get all that data, we'll start, we'll start the alignment of that. And we'll bring that back to the board for further report. Everybody's just not, they don't have all their stuff yet, so they're busy. I understand that, because a lot of things going on, so. I hope it all goes together, I think we're about 70% there.
And what I'd like to report to, to the commission, as y'all know, I've been liaising, talking to the fire companies. We've had probably four meetings with the committee, and I have met with several of these companies privately, and also had several conversations with many chiefs and many members of multiple different fire companies. This has been going since we've had the hearing, I think it was on the Fitch Study back in '50. It has been very clear to the public that the motions that we had made, like John said, we had made a motion to see who would be willing to sell their ambulances, to see which companies would be willing to lease. And we also made a motion to hire an appraiser to appraise the ambulances. And we also made a motion to consult with a commercial real estate broker to determine the lease rates for the firehouses. I would like to move another motion tonight to give Mr. Nissel some further direction and to let everybody know the clear direction that the county commission is moving forward with. So I move to direct, this is my motion. I move to direct County Administrator John Nissel to develop a plan to create a county ambulance service and authorize him to take the following actions subject to commission approval. Develop an organizational structure for the county ambulance service. Consult with all necessary experts, advisors, and contractors to assist with the creation and operation of service. Secure all necessary vendors or contractors to assist with the creation and operation of the service. Secure all necessary licenses, certifications, permits, and approvals to accomplish the commission's directive to create a county ambulance service. Propose a final number of ambulances that are required to provide service to citizens of Jefferson County. Negotiate purchases of ambulances and obtain the facilities that are necessary to house and operate the ambulances. Report to the commission on progress and seek further authorization as necessary. That is my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'd really like to see a copy of what you just read out.
It's, I'll believe, so this basically have John develop a whole plan for us.
I want to give John the direction to move forward. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, pretty much that's what that is.
And does John have time to do that with all his other responsibilities? That's, that's my, my question that I think we're putting ahead and letting on.
I think that's, that's where the park is going to secure any contractors needed, necessary to exist.
Okay, well, I didn't have that in front of me.
I'm sorry. That's a lot. Yes, ma'am, that's why I had that in there.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any more updates for Jen, I have number 10? An open session? John, did you want to do administrative reports before we go into session?
I would like to get those in executive session, please.
I think that's all we can do.
Item number A, under me, is a, is an issue related to our solar tax amendment. And I think that Alex is here to give you just a little update and help where we are on that.
Evening.
Evening.
I'll keep the shirt.
I'm just here, I think that you have a copy of the text amendment and a copy of my memo that gives the detailed history. So I will just give you a summary of what occurred on Tuesday. Plank Commission had the draft text amendment that creates provisions for solar facilities to process in Jefferson County. There's now a conditional use permit process for projects that would be located outside of the growth areas and would be permitted by right within the growth areas. So that's the very broad overview of what's in the text there. On Tuesday, they held their public hearing. They had four written submissions, which I forwarded to the commission, so you'd be aware of that. And we did have about eight people speak during the hearing. The Plank Commission found that the, or, excuse me, found that the text amendment was consistent with the comprehensive plan and has forwarded it to you for the purpose of scheduling a public hearing. So as you're aware, since we've been through this, a public hearing has to be held on this text before you can take any action on it. So if you would like to schedule that date or direct staff to come up with a date, we'd be happy to do that. I know that if we submitted an ad to the spirit tomorrow, we could have an ad in the paper on the 25th. And if the commission wants to hold a special hearing, it looks like we could do that as early as June 9th and meet that 15-day legal ad requirement. Otherwise, your next regular scheduled meeting would be on the 16th.
If it's the commission's pleasure, you need to make a motion to set a public hearing on whatever day you choose after the 9th.
Did you say it had to be after the 9th?
The 9th or after.
Oh, the 9th or after.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to direct staff to advertise for public hearing. And I'm going to propose a public hearing on Friday morning, the 10th at 9:30.
Is there a second?
I have to abstain, so I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, so we're now in the discussion, yeah. So why are you proposing a Friday morning?
I mean, we can do Thursday morning, I just, the 9th, I think, I mean, we can do it on the 9th. I just proposed Friday morning. I'm just throwing it out there.
If we schedule one, I'd rather do it on a Thursday, that's traditional, our meeting time. And I think that would serve the public better. I'm not sure, you know, 9th or 10th.
I mean, I'm not opposed to Thursday morning, the 9th, I can amend to be Thursday morning, the 9th, at 9:30.
Is there a break for me?
Yeah.
No, it's the second Thursday.
Is there any more discussion? And just for my clarification, it is amended to the 9th.
To the 9th, at 9:38.
All right, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
State that I have stated.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Yeah. Nathan, was there anything else, was that the only one?
I have only to report to you on my item number B, which is Jefferson County Circuit Court Civil Action, my 2278. And then there are some matters of potential liability regarding the ambulance issues as reflected in paragraph 10, that I would like to bring the commission to talk about. And I believe that would be appropriate in exceptional discussions. There are some items of potential liability and also potential contract issues.
I think if we go into executive session, our item number 8, the potential liability, and also we have contractual matters, including item number 10. Well, that's to do with employment. Okay, all right. And county administrator reports and regarding employment issues.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. I move we come on the executive session.
The session.
The move is seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just to clarify, it's Claire Beck with her.
Yeah.
Did she hang up over here?
I don't know. Maybe she hung up. She's on that.
All right. So is there anything else come for the commission this evening?
I have two. Yes, yeah. So I want to, um, other administrative board, someone to talking about two, eight, two items. Approval of higher finance director on the position financial matter, the position director of financial management was advertised through both commission website as well as indeed our goal is to cast the wide net and capture most talented advocates. So mere, mere of the position description, the cast we received 21 applications were vetted and selected based on experience and talent. 21 applications I was selected and contacted for interviews. I conducted those interviews. Um, so it's my ask that we reappoint Michelle Gordon as the director of financial management at a salary of $104,000 for two weeks of vacation. And on beginning at the start date of May 23rd. Just saying I'm asking this court's anniversary date fall on 9/22 since that was originally a higher date in 2015. Basically, I'm asking that Miss Court's leave accrual rate be based on the original date of 9/22/15. Tier disorder sick leave back of 654 hours.
Okay. Only I'd like to maybe mention that I know we're still moving report, moving in a couple of different directions with the auditors report. And, uh, I think, uh, it's a great idea to have a financial director back on the foreline. And, um, I think that we need to maybe, uh, we might have to tweak the, once we, once we meet with the two. To be in, uh, compliant with the auditors report, we should probably, we might have to adjust the description later depending on, we'll have to work with the clerk's office and potentially, um, adjust some of the duties later, once, once we can sit down with our clerk and determine which duties that need to be there or, or at the commission. But it's very important that this, the county where size have a financial, um, director or that works for the commission. And at least it advises the mission on, on financial matters. Um, so I will, um, I move, uh, to accept that motion for reappointment of, uh, Ms. Michelle Gordon. With all, I didn't write down all the, uh, stuff that you, the salary and.
I can give you a copy if you want.
Yes. So yes, I'll read it how we. You're, what you're reading too. Okay, good deal. So the month, so it's in the formal motion, um, the reappointment and show Gordon as director of financial management has salary $104,000 and two weeks of vacation added to beginning on the start date of May 23rd additionally. Uh, Ms. Gordon's anniversary date will fall on 9/22 since, uh, that was her original hire date in 2015. Uh, Ms. Gordon's leave accrual will, uh, rate will be based on original date of 9/22/15. And, and her sick leave will be restored, uh, leave back of 654 hours. That is the motion.
Seven.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there more discussion?
Yes, I would like to point out that I think this is a dereliction of duty of the county commission not to sit down and have a conversation with the county clerk to restore her statutory responsibilities as outlined in the auditors report. Um, and there are a lot of duties in this job description that I believe rightfully belong under the county clerk or either delegated by the county clerk. And I don't think this job description is an accurate depiction of what this role would be if the county clerk were to take those duties and responsibilities back. So I cannot support that.
All right. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, one second. I was on mute.
Oh.
Uh, I guess I did just want to say like I, I feel like I'm in a tough spot and I'm just wondering if, if there's a way to do the motion because I do understand where John's coming from, that we don't exactly have a timeline for when, um, when we're going to sit down and iron everything out with the auditor's report. And I just, I don't know that we can keep continuing not having a financial director.
Right. And to Claire's point, John's reached out to the clerk in good faith and she has yet to have a meeting with him. So, um, did I agree with that, that line of logic? We need a financial director. So, uh, but, uh, was there something you want to say, Jen?
Just a point of order.
But so we already said aye.
Yeah, but I didn't know what Claire said yet. We haven't finished the vote.
Yeah. So Claire, were you an aye?
Um, I, I'm an aye.
Got you. Um, nays?
Nay.
So passes four to one.
Can I have one more personality?
Yep.
Involved Jessica Carroll. As you know, Jessica Carroll, uh, left the commission last December 17th and was subsequently rehired in January 4th, 24th. During her tenure, Jessica was earning 12 hours of vacation time and when she returned, she regressed back to 10 hours of vacation time per month. I ask is to take Ms. Carroll's vacation and pull back up to 12 hours per month. Additionally, I would like to request that the balance of her sick leave be restored to approximately 466.5 hours.
Um, I move that, uh, we approve the reinstatement of the accrual rates for Jessica Carroll, executive assistant as outlawed by Mr. Nissel. I'm not going to try to repeat that.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Is there anything else come for the commission this evening? Hearing none. We return.